Any additions or deletions?
Put that in.
Eight six. And we have another one from.
Yeah, King's Cross.
Yep, and then we just got one from the DVA Community Gardens, eight seven. You don't have anything else, or?
Not getting a motion for approval.
Second there. All in favor? Motion carried. Minutes of the previous meeting, October sixteenth. Any errors or additions that we had to correct? If not, can I get a motion for approval? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Business arrived in minutes, administrative assistant, special project coordinator. All right, Tom.
Okay, so, um, we just wanted to bring that up. We did get the job description from Yarnet, Tammy Yarnet, so they're grant coordinator, since they've just recently hired. Basically, that job description is very fixated on just that grant rating. A little bit of other stuff, but the thing is, I think it's not, it's not broad enough for us, but some of the duties for the grant, like, you can property fix and things. And I guess basically, you know, I'm trying to find out what we need, what, what council vision of that position would be. And the other thing is, is that council is going to, I mean, three year. At the first school, but, but I do whatever, right? I mean, we can't advertise for two or three month terms, you're not going to get any value. Right? We talked about that before.
We did talk about that position going up in administrative, I do, and issues.
Yeah, that's why, so, I guess the, the thing is, I can go back at that latest job description and put a little bit more of a grant responsible rating and, and responsibility and do it.
See what? To me, that was my whole set, that, that position could bring in at least the same amount of putting that salary in rents. That's my whole.
Yeah, well, originally, that's what we were hoping, that they could look at all the grants that are available here, because there's a lot to look there. I did talk with the one from Yarnet, she presented the NSF area, so, um, talked to her, talked to her, and she's plenty, plenty busy, she keeps it. So, just they are, yeah, they are a bigger unit, they've got more people to serve and stuff like that.
But it takes time just to read through all that stuff and understand what you might be able to be eligible for, when you have to be eligible for it, and what you have to do again.
Yeah, and if you can't make this cycle, maybe make the, get all prepared for the next cycle. And especially if it's an annual type of grants, uh, and work towards that for the next year.
Not only, not only for the town, but for other groups in the town, if you can call it dark and say, did you know you can do this, you know, that, that's where.
And, you know, vice versa, maybe so much, uh, as, as access to, we know, but that we, we could take advantage of it as well, you know?
So what do you look forward for funding for, in what period of time, a year?
I would say that basically, yeah, it would be a year and the salary scale would be the same as the expert, which is less than what the previous position would be either. Expert, accounting coordinator, at, at that level, I mean, basically, our, our, uh, public works operations are at that level.
We're looking at January, February, and September.
Uh, probably, yeah, we'd probably be for at, at least the fiscal year. I mean, we do have a little bit of money from the previous position, but, you know, if we wanted to start a little bit earlier, but the thing is.
By the time you get the job description rewritten?
Yeah.
The notice of, it would be that time. So, do we, uh, Tom, could we just start advertising for the position if you're sort of aware of what granters want to be and whether or not we go through with it? You still have time to get the decision from council to say yes or no to funding, I mean, we don't have to hire somebody if we don't want to fund it, but is that kind of what you're looking for?
Well, I guess the, the thing is, I want to make a note or attempt at the job description because, basically, that it's, because it is a new, new position and, uh, council should approve it, if it's approved by me for it.
So this is the direction that we're headed, but that position, you guys are agreeing with?
Yes, yeah, you know, with the, the, it was on, uh, grants. Yeah, I think it is, yeah, I think it's, you know, the grant, the grant writing ability and the administrative support that needs to be there and this, the other community developments. Actually, that's where, that's where things went wrong. Way, way, I think way, way too broad, I think where person took it, took what she wanted to do, not be much basic, what, have a lot more good.
All right. Second. Move on to staff reports, CAO report.
Mayor Development Officer, previous month, five development permits issued, ninety-two Montague Road for change of use, thirty-seven Carlton Street for a deck, seventy-four Mountain Street for a garage, sixty-seven St. Mary's Street for exit accessory building, and twenty-five Burke Street for an addition. There was one development agreement application received, and that's for the progress development on Mountain Street. And I've been busy in discussions with developers, discussing potential residential development. Most recent discussion is a residential project in the South Bean, which may require some infrastructure investment by the town to foster the development. I am, and qualified with the sale of the property actually went through, so if the sales went through, then I think we'll be, we'll be forthcoming with an application for, for some development agreement.
So how much of your structure development will be at the, kind of, you have to be?
And that, that one there, it may be the extension of Third Avenue, right from St., uh, St. George's, neck down, it's sort of a deviant type, type thing, and then, uh, it depends, this would be for phase one, because phase one, you're going to do one portion, phase two, you're going to do another one, and that board is on the West Street extension, so depending on how big, that's, that one's going to have two buildings on it, and so we may have to, uh, work with them on, on that as well, but, you know. And our, of course, I didn't promise anything, I just said the council would have to look at it and find out, and would have to pretty much be guaranteed that, that they turn on our, on our investment, everything, and, but there are no things, you know, other than doing the ready service, they may have put some water and silver down that, but not, not much.
How big a building is this?
I can't remember.
Probably, probably have to put like eight inch name down here, and look at that bit, and then your silver, impossible to steal. No, it's a different construction project, but, you know, the smaller ones, we get second act in ourselves.
Yeah.
It's essentially, the smaller ones, we can't tell those shows, especially when they're on, it's easier, just that means we can't do anything outside of.
Well, that one, yeah.
It's great, and we're not all there yet, but, but still, it's, it's there and it's ready, so.
Yeah, and the thing, thing is, now, like, they developed what their, um, rent, or what they planned, is they're all going to be two bedroom apartments, and, uh, they're looking at twelve hundred dollars a month, all in puts, nothing that you would have to pay for or shoes or, um, those things, and the heat lights, roof over your head for twelve hundred, including some road wall, all of that crap, so. So that, you pretty much fit in orderable, I was, I mean, where are you going to get ads for traffic on their own, it's heating light and food, right? So, the developer is from the west in Vancouver, so.
Has he done anything else that's true?
They're looking at another, they're doing, uh, looking into doing another project in Moonbury as well, and, uh, apparently they're getting a lot, they got a lot more hurdles to jump through than Moonbury than they do with us, so, here it is, etc., yeah. So, you know, the thing is, they'll keep me informed, but steps are there, you know, it'll be good to get that so, so clean. All right, so building inspection, uh, three building permits were issued, seventy-four Mountain Street for construction of a garage, ninety Montague Road for repair to a motel, and thirty-seven Carlton Street, construction of a deck. Fire inspections, one tin water street, there was a follow-up inspections, and there were deficiencies were found, and the follow-ups, so, is up to code now. I know, uh, report from the fire department. Municipal capital growth program, um, so the development of municipal affairs and housing, and that's the call for applications under the municipal capital growth program, which is a new one-time program for twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, that provides investments for capital, municipal infrastructure, its service, no discusses growing population, all supporting provincial priority areas. Senior management team had reviewed the criteria for making an application, and any capital projects in the approved twenty-three, twenty-four capital budget that would fit the criteria. The senior management team recommends that the application include the generator for town hall generator, and the generators for the rest stations, one, two, three, and four. Total budgeted for this, these projects is four hundred and maybe five thousand. Uh, we're seeking a detailed cost estimate for the application. These projects would be eligible under the climate change adaptation section of the MCGP, and council resolution supporting the submission of the project, uh, for funding consideration is required to accompany the permit. Applications are open from, uh, November first to December thirteenth, at midnight, and the capital growth program may find up to fifty percent of that eligible cost for each project. The applicant must demonstrate the ability to fund the remaining balance of the projects through municipal and or other sources. The municipal authority of the district, DGB, will be funding partner on the generators for the rest stations, and requests for, uh, letter of support from the district should be sent to the district.
So I want to ensure that the council support, uh, submission project for funding consideration under the MCGP, and that we also send a letter of, uh, requesting support from the district.
Second.
Aye. Did you see my email, Tom, from this, what was it last week?
Right, prices.
Both prices?
Yeah.
Yeah, I should have already wanted to bring it up.
Yeah, we did get, yeah, I wrote this, I didn't have prices, but since we, we did get prices, the prices are higher than what is there, but, uh, which, that is one thing that, uh, they had a webinar on, making application, sort of an overview of this program, and it stressed that you should have as current a pricing as you can get, so that you can get the best amount, because basically, if, we'll say, if we sit, it's four hundred eighty-five, that's what we want, and fifty percent, that's all we're going to get, right? Even then, costs of six hundred, right? And we would be fifty percent, four eighty-five, better than nothing, but fifty percent of six hundred or something.
Was it six hundred plus tax?
Yeah.
That's what they said. So, and I have, I have talked to Jeff after we go, he knows, and he's waiting for the letter from us to say that, first of all, they see, so.
So, basically, yeah, the, the backup generator for the town hall is the only one that they, they squeaked in, but we're hanging on the fact that we use this sometimes as an EMO, uh, back, would be a backup for EMO things, and so, and continuation of, uh, of operations as well, for long-term power outage, right? I mean, we can get by for two hours or a day, but if you had power outage for a week or so, um, can't everyone hot operate, right?
So, didn't listen to you, I was doing.
Yeah. And the thing is, in a computerized world, most of our workers on computers, but it's always, you know. It's a, that's what. Okay, so, marketing levy bylaw amendments, so, bylaw has been amended by changing the levy rate to three percent and to the two dollar flat rate, as per the requirements of section seventy-five A of the MGA, and change council membership to the marketing promotion levy advisory committee to any member of council, and not specific to mayor or warden, and allow council appointments to be elected as chair. Amend section sixteen A to be, the use of funds collected through the marketing and promotions levy bylaw of the town and district shall only be used to promote tourism, and the room limit was not amended in the means at one. So that's come up later for free.
And that's within that group, this stuff?
That's pretty much, and, uh, I updated Jeff, I said, and Jeff said, you didn't think that the room number was going to be an issue in this town, so. If it is, well, if that's a slight difference, you know, so be it, I guess, you know, that's. Uh, the marketing, marketing promotion levy advisory committee, so as of November sixth, uh, meeting, Charles Otter stepped down temporarily as chair of the committee, and Saskia Dirks will be acting chair. I've subsequently been advised by Mr. Otter, people no longer be employed with the Condes Resort effective November tenth, twenty twenty-three. This will create a vacancy on the committee, as Mr. Otter's appointment was, as in a Conations honor, and, uh, replaced us when we required to be appointed. So ba- basically, uh, with that, uh, we did have access, uh, candidates the last time around, but I strongly believe that we need to back up to market, because, uh, there's strong indication that, uh, that there'll be some backlash at a certain establishment, it's not like you get membership on that, however, I have an opportunity. Or have an opportunity to submit an application, so, uh, and I did have a, that phone conversation this afternoon, was, uh, I don't know what his title is, he's a son of, of. This is John, along the fire, and, uh, so, he indicated that he would be interested, and I told him, I said, well, I said, I said, we have a policy on citizen appointments, and that's all we have to follow, and in order to be appointed as a citizen appointment, you have to reside within the staff of people, and he goes, oh, well, I live in the grove, so I guess I can't be. So, uh, anyway, he's, uh, he said, well, what if we can, we appoint somebody that does meet all criteria, and I said, as long as you, you can prove to the town council that person is representing the pawns, then you can put an application, that person for putting an application, but it'd be, it'd be. So, I write, strong recommendation on, on, uh, that vacant fill and that vacancies, be back to advertisement for the council. All right, move on to the other works.
Okay. Oh, sorry, just, Tom, can I ask, have you heard any more from the actualizes of your about the shelters that the council?
No, I, you know, I heard one piece since, in the, in the meeting, so I don't know what.
I didn't hear. Thanks, just kind of, just get the highlights. We give your place, pump one, or pump two, station one, I left station number one. So, updated, which hasn't gone to CAO's office yet, but equipment usage policy updated to include the new hybrid S and B. Just kind of get into the building maintenance, keep everybody up to date, so, obviously, everybody's seen the video, it's all skirted, it's all tight inside, two decks have been installed, water sewer are hooked up, we're just waiting for the power to be hooked up so we can go back to work on the inside of it. Uh, the downpan bathrooms, all we have left to do is just set the fixtures and hook up the hot water tank and heater, and the two charging stations for, for vehicles, dug the holes today, the spend we worked more on, and they'll be in place, so, and that project will be completed. Uh, the short break call, so, is on, it's completed, and there's wait for the tender documents to be finished, and tender documents for the tourist group today, our DGB also, uh, DGB station, uh, two doors have been ready for complete today, so first is going to solve tomorrow, then we have the main common area DGB station all finished, uh, I would say by, in next week. I'm sure you've straight traffic review, we're going to discuss it a little bit later, and I think the, I think Tom's briefed you on the transfer station, so I have taken over, the oversight of the operation of the transfer station, and started helping SOEs for the operation of the station, just to help it run more efficiently, and we have really cleaned up around the grounds a lot, and cut, cut the bushes back, the alders back, we still have about days' work left there, and the management company's been helping us with the task, so, which has been, which has been good. So, last thing I have to talk about is the Christmas Daddy's building, that's located at, at Public Works, so, I was, I was approached by the Lees, Christmas Daddy's, and they, they told us that after this Christmas season, no longer, no longer going to be using that building, so, there was agreement, agreement years ago, it was an agreement that I was told, and I think Tom was told the same, same thing, basically, Christmas Daddy's paid all the material, Public Works built the building, and the deal was, when Christmas Daddy's was done with the building, they would turn the building back over to the town. So, the little blue one, it's a twenty by twenty-four, the Limerick, it's got a black roof, I believe. Blue sawing, black roof. Well, the other side, oh, okay, gave the higher repair, so, is that building in there? Yeah, right there. So, it's, it's twenty by twenty-four, um, it is wired, so, the building can stay there, the building can be moved, it's totally, totally, I'll get the council to do it, I guess. Uh, one recommendation I have from one of my employees was to keep it and, and use it for a carpentry shop, because we do do a lot of ground carpentry, but then there's also been discussions that it could use for something else, too, so, that could be moved to a different location and used for alternative means, so, just kind of, we wanted to bring it up so the council's aware, and, both from there. Is there anything else you want to add on that one, Tom?
No.
I did ask the Lees for a letter, so they stated that they were, which we haven't received, but, very short, I can't see the comments. I did ask the police for a letter, so they stated that they were looking at that, which we haven't received, but very short, I can't see the coming. Tell them that, it was not going to happen, so.
Would you stay at the time home?
Yes, yes, there's just, that's why, there's other alternatives too, possibly, but I think it needs to be discussed amongst council. We know that for ourselves, so again, there's any.
How much longer before the day home was completed?
Not a hundred percent sure, we're going to go, we're going to finish the one last grand job, which is at the back of the debris station, and then we'll go back to work on that as a council. What were questions, do you have to do all this? Um, we're, I think they were going to be seasonal, we talked about this a lot, so no, we're not going to see this, this season, but. We did talk about the one at the back of the debris station possibly being on the top of this year, I'm just waiting on the direction of that as a picture. So, because that one has a shower in it, so everybody doesn't have all, uh, it must be, people in the process.
Right, questions for Ed? Just now, we can go on to the director of finance, thanks, Ed.
Okay, so report is there overall, details, I had a chance to read it. Um, the statement of operations, uh, there's a few items, a little over budget, uh, that's mainly what I mentioned here. Uh, there's offsetting items, a little under budget, so, uh, all in all, we're, we're heading for, uh, no big surprise at the end of the year. And the, uh, development permit fees, uh, the provincial government, uh, made the announcement, I go, I think Will was fairly interested in what was happening with this. And I just want to be able to answer the question, should, uh, what the provincial government has done to HRM happen to all municipalities? Basically saying you, you cannot collect any more development fees, but potentially building permit fees, although that part wasn't very clear. So we would lose about forty-five hundred dollars in development fees, and if building permit fees were affected, another four thousand. Audit fees, uh, this year, significant extra charge, five thousand dollars related to the extra out of work performed with respect to the introduction of. New robust standard, accounting standard, asset retirement obligations, uh, it was a fair bit of work, uh, five thousand. You know, I see it a little bit steep, but, uh, it was less than, than what the number of our, uh, comparable municipalities would be charged for. Microsoft three sixty-five, uh, town currently is using Microsoft Office two thousand thirteen, so this is our Word, Excel, PowerPoint, uh, our office. Um, so fairly, fairly behind, and I did a poll just to see what other municipalities were using, and almost, or almost all responded that have already switched to Microsoft three sixty-five, stay up to date, so. I got eighteen yeses and one no response, uh, and at the conference, attended a session on it, and, uh. Now, some answers, one was, I couldn't under, it's since it's cloud-based, I was worried, how are you guys using this on the Microsoft server? Store our data outside of camera, it's a known of municipalities, but, uh, Microsoft can do it on one hundred percent Canadian servers, so that, that question has been answered. Uh, I think we need to look at the pros and cons of moving to Microsoft three sixty-five for almost, uh, there would be, uh, uh, fees associated with it instead of paying. Buying your product every so many years, you'd be paying an annual licensing fee. Uh, insurance, uh, still ongoing action, uh, legal action that our insurance companies dealing with with regards to a more meaningful population in two thousand twenty-one. Uh, in the hands of our insurance company, hopefully, uh, don't affect us. Um, attention one-on-one, uh, meetings with staff that our, uh, advisors do, uh, will be coming up, uh, we're going to set the dates for January. Uh, that is a good service that they provide, one-on-one meetings with every single staff member who's on our bench, which is almost all. W C B, this is just noted here, just to let us know that, uh, a few years ago, W C B coverage was mandated for volunteer firefighters, we started that. Uh, the coverage is now, uh, your fee structure is now based on your usage of it, and your level of claims, and we're now above average. And, uh, so it's costing us a bit more, not, not that these are big dollars, but it does just remind us that we're going to make sure that, uh, the fire department is. Using, uh, best occupational health and safety practices and making sure that they really stay safe. Uh, it's not only a financial issue, but also, we just don't want anyone to hurt.
Yeah, is it share costs for the municipality?
Uh. No, not in the sense, we pay it directly, uh, the municipality gives us, uh, a annual grant for fire services based on the old formula for the, to all the fire departments. And we're not even quite sure where originated neither, it's from the Fraser back when I asked her. And there's also a capital fire rate, uh, that they collect that they put aside for the fire department, which helps them buy capital.
I didn't inform you how it's thirty-five plus you. That's our fire back. Drive.
Or maybe you, was you get it or we, it was a big book? Are we the only ones using that formula, or we did everything?
Uh. Well, we don't use it, it's the fire association that uses it, right? And that's how, and they give X number of dollars based on, that's how it did that based on that formula for each fire department. So. That hasn't changed since, we get, we, we get, it's a hundred and. No, I don't think it's that much, it is, uh. I guess if your question is, is it similar to what other fire departments do around the province, the answer is everybody does it completely, there is no one more. Uh, it is, it's a real, uh, mix match of.
Is my, basis of my question is, if when I, it's not a significant amount, but will we be asking for an intervention in the municipality?
They, they basically tell us, so, based on their formula, so you can see on the screen, there's sixty-five thousand dollars. And all of the other years, we can just see the pattern. Fire service grants. And, yeah, so you can see the various years, how much it's increased each year, I'm not sure, I've never seen the formula myself. So not familiar with, uh, how we, how we calculate it.
There's, well, we, you know, give an increase every year, but not. So would the, I know you probably don't know, but would the fire departments in the use of Pally get more than they have?
I don't really, it's a lot less.
A lot less.
Yeah, I see the screen, I think it's what, eleven or twelve fire departments.
Yeah.
So the fire grant is, is split up between all.
Well.
It won't.
Comes with that, dividing it back into. I'm surprised we didn't get that. Although we are.
See, the other thing, and, the other thing that you. Is that the municipality provides our fire department dispatch services, nothing, right, so that, that's sort of it. The benefit that we get that we don't, you know, they don't write the check for, we don't get the check, but we definitely get a benefit of, right? Sixty bucks, so.
Okay, so our rental units, uh, thirty-three mounted street, renting up to date, uh, residential dwelling, uh, there's two months in arrears, and as of, uh, ten days, there'll be. One day, so there'll be three months in arrears, so it's a constant discussion with them, uh, uh, it's no particular one. There's no dispute that we're not doing anything, or any reason why the rent's being held, it's just, uh, it just tends to be. The rent, uh, is going to go up for the first time, um, uh, five percent effective April first, that's the total that we're allowed. Residential rent will be about five percent in that year, uh, but it's only four hundred and twenty-five, but we're down on, say, four forty-nine, somewhere around there. Yeah, they're quite happy with the number, they're not screaming that at all, very happy, and, uh, keep designing, don't jeopardize this, you have a good deal, they recognize it. Asset retirement obligations are also here in your head in the provincial government's municipal, uh, finance, uh, financial reporting, accounting. And that's a guideline that, that all municipalities follow, so our financial reporting is consistent across the board, we can compare apples to apples for everybody. But one thing that's, that's come up in it, and this is new, and this is, uh, this will affect us and potentially affect tax rates, although not that much. But in their new draft, it strongly recommended that municipalities and villages build reserves to contribute to the funding of future asset retirement obligations. So for us, we have on our books, I don't care, I remember how we did it, I think our calculation is about, in forty years from now, we need to decommission our wealth. These are all very broad estimates, uh, so we would have to put enough money aside each year to, to fund these, uh, uh, these liabilities, these future liabilities. It'd be about five thousand dollars we'd have to put in our reserve each year if council chooses to do so, because right now, the draft is, it is strongly recommended. Uh, I find it very odd, never seen anything like that in a frame before in my life, it's usually a thou shalt, or they stay silent, so. I wouldn't be surprised to see that be a thou shalt, uh, in the plan we're out.
Appreciate to the choir, but really take issue with all these government agency things. Spend this money, and put that money aside, so where's, where's that money coming from, there's no more new money today.
Yeah.
And that's where.
Hey, two thousand yesterday, and twenty thousand tomorrow, but.
For us, is it, it's, there's an administrative burden, not a very big financial burden, there are, there would be cases where this is wrong. If you were a small municipality and you'd been handed over a school recently and it had a million dollar worth of asbestos that needs to be cleaned out, you should be putting money aside for that. And that's what this is meant to address, but unfortunately, us with our little number on the books, just end up doing as much work, uh, calculating it and, uh, adding it into our tax calculation every year. So not too much to worry about for us, uh, unless we discover that we have some large liability that, uh, we need to think of. Sustainable Communities Challenge Fund, uh, this is one of those grants that we, we were talking about grants earlier, and, um, this potentially would pay, well, it would pay eighty percent. Uh, for solar rooftop, uh, uh, on, on municipal buildings. Um, so this one came up fairly quick on us, uh, we're not going to make this application period if we wanted to, November fourteenth. And talked to them and said, you know, can we just grab an estimate, throw our hat in the ring, and the answer was sure, go ahead, don't get it. You, you need to have an energy audit done or, uh, at least some type of step. And one of the things we're doing right now, uh, Tom, we're, we're leasing on this, is our buildings are now being monitored. Uh, nine of our buildings, or I can't remember how many, six buildings, anyway, a number of our buildings have energy monitoring equipment in them, uh, which allows us a web-based interface. And hopefully, uh, over the next months or year, that will give us information, so that if you bring somebody in to do an energy audit, they'll have lots of, uh, lots of information that they need. And, um, we could potentially move forward with, with one of these grants, because at eighty percent funded, I would guess that it's, whether you like solar or you don't like solar. If you're only paying twenty percent of the capital cost, I'm guessing you're going to make money. Uh, so I highly recommend we look at in the future operating much, it's making sure that we, um, try to, uh, get a, uh, get an energy audit, uh, done of those particular areas. Only large roofs, south-facing roof service, really, there is, is dark, and that's going to be determined that the roof needs to be replaced, so it doesn't. Needs to be replaced in two years, so it's no sense putting any on it.
Be the. That's it. It would be the.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Anyway, and I guess it's important to know, is, is solar something that council, I haven't really heard anything, is interested in, is not interested in? Is interested in only to make money on it, or not make money in it, is any?
A hundred years ago, at Derek, we did discuss, uh, uh, solar and also, uh, a small window in the back of the building, you know. And then Carrie was, was doing a lot of work on, on it at the time.
Right.
So, uh, I don't know, you know, she kind of died, and, uh.
Yeah.
But, uh, could enter, and efficiency, no, it's supposed to do a lot of force.
Uh, possibly, and that's, those are, I'm saying, maybe we can wrench this contingent upon somebody else helping us to prefer the cost of the audit. And, uh, that would be a way of doing it. I guess.
My approach is, you have to decide what you want it to do, do you want solar panels to be backup? Do you want solar panels to bring your cost down in energy, do you want solar panels to run the emergency system that has a battery back, backup? You know, but what do you want it, want it to do, right?
I think it depends on what's being offered at the time and what, what an energy consultant would, would say. Uh, I mean, to me, uh, backup wouldn't be much of an issue, uh, getting the battery technology is a lot more expensive, I don't know whether we want that. I would assume that they're going to say it's a net beering, as long as your panels aren't way more than the capacity of your building, um, generally will be producing for the building, very rarely, uh, sending back into the grid. And it depends on other costs, how much to connect to the grid, are you going to pay the net beering here, and so at the time, it's, yeah, uh, seems like the, each time you look at it, you get a different answer. But, but anyway, it sounds like there is some interest if, if the dollars make sense, absolutely, that's the way.
I certainly would check with efficiency, efficiency, no, it's gross, it does seem, there.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah, and tend to follow their website, uh, I haven't seen anything recently we've checked through. Okay, so that's, that's basically my report, there is a, um. I know we don't often, uh, give information on what happens at conferences, uh, but I'll just go through this really quickly. Get it up on the screen here, it's just the each session, I had to make some notes anyway, so I don't want to just throw them here. So municipal finance officers section, so fraud and risk management, uh, what's the best bang for your buck if you're looking for fraud? And the whistle lower hotline was by far the best control bang for your buck, uh, I learned that session. Uh, big risks, um, employees never let others perform their duties, example payroll, might have something like that here. We have to, uh, to look at and try and make sure we get cross-screen, uh, we get different people doing these jobs. And billing schemes represent the largest, most frequent assets, those appropriation frauds, uh, somebody getting a check paid to a company that they say is Dexter's, but the check's made of somebody else, so they. They create a bill that looks like something we would be building and somehow gets it through, uh, we're, we're fairly good in that, it's got to get through multiple signatures, uh. It's going to get, Ed's going to have a signature on it, Dan's going to see Ed's signature, and I am going to have it, and I make sure that it looks like Ed's signature is there again, so we're pretty good in that respect. Office three sixty-five, I think I mentioned this before, uh, two employees in the town using it, that's Leslie and I, because we couldn't get the old service, uh, working, so we had to move over. Um, and, uh, it, it, uh, it has definite benefits, you know, it's always up to date, and, uh, some of the functionality goes beyond, let's say, over two thousand thirteen. And, uh, some of the functionality goes beyond, let's say, maybe over two thousand thirteen, so we need to look at the cost and consider full removal.
Those are subscription-based, then, too?
Yeah. Keynote Phil Jewell, uh, certainly, uh, he talked a fair bit about our policies holding us back, or we're mired ourselves in red tape. Feel free to basically get out, make a mistake, and, uh, and, and don't make sure that you, you know, have a word with him saying, make sure you have controls over your fraud, but, but don't let your policies hold back development. Don't, don't get so mired in, in the minutia and writing policies for every little problem that's occurred. Make sure that you look at the big picture and, and work for it. We want housing, let's not write a landing smile law that's so technical, so detailed, so, uh, micromanaged that, uh, slings back and takes judgment down for, uh, over management. Hiring, hire for character over technical, uh, technical competence every single day. You can teach people for technical competence, hire for character. Municipal responses to cyber threats, we keep hearing more in the, uh, news about ransomware attacks, those in particular. And, uh, you know, I just threw in a couple of things here, can our recording controls be hacked? Or can our recording, uh, alarms be suppressed? And Ed said, you know, it sounds like we've got, there's fairly good controls in that respect, but there's probably other vulnerabilities that we have. And, uh, people that are just to cause mischief with infrastructure. Access and privacy essentials, uh, I've been familiar with this for a while, so. Emails, uh, personal chatter in emails, uh, if they're requested, I get the FOIPOP requests, and I have no ability to, uh, take out any of the chatter and personal information, or, sorry, personal chatter, personal, uh, comments unless there is personal information in there. There's no address, no, uh, names not related to the topic. It's, all that information's going to go through, so, uh, just another reason, I guess, to try to use at big B dot C A email or all of your emails that are work-related. As soon as you open the door to your, your local, your personal account, those emails are FOIPOP-able as well, so just, just keep that in mind. And if people come in and ask, we have, have to make every reasonable effort to assist. We do get, uh, then we don't get them very often. And, uh, keep the dialogue going so that we can, uh, narrow people down. For example, if we get a request from one person, but I want to know about every single charge and bill and document about this property, we're going to last, well, forever. We went back to the individuals, said, what time period are you looking for their water bill, your tax bill, information? Get it narrowed down to more or less five long fractions, that sort of thing. Mental health, uh, always the topic at the conferences. And, uh, the fires that went on lately, uh, and the other EMO events. There was a question from before that said, is there a provincial team to help out the DMO events? Do you have staff to just send out to, to help people with the, you know, crisis intervention? To, uh, to, to help people talk through these situations? So the broad answer was they're working on, working, we have a team. And, one of the keynotes. It was a keynote. Accessing funding streams. So this was a good one, again, Tom had mentioned Towny Arment, the hiring full-time grant application writer, Arndale. I believe that someone working with him part-time helping them. And they stressed in their presentation, building relationships was, uh, was the most important. They needed to get lots of parties on board, including the MLA, the neighboring municipalities, uh, and everybody had a state. And other people will also struggle with, how do you prepare to grant proposals in the short window when big grants are offered? And I gave the example of our PCAP grants for church and King Street for design being there. So those are hopefully going to be on the table, on our shelf ready, so when the big grants come out, we can do what we've done with Mount Street. Mount Street has the big grant. So we'll have at least church and king ready to go, the information we need, the dollar values that we need to move forward with the grant, so they're eyes. Housing and homeless, uh, Matt Shobman, Director of Housing and Homeless, did a great job with his presentation. Talked a lot about how we help, we listen, we monitor, we engage the neighbors. They're not there to discipline people, they're there to help. And just reminder, of course, ruling municipalities cannot forcibly remove homeless tent shelter from municipal property. They have no alternative housing offer, so we need to be prepared.
Municipalities didn't have anybody hired to do their grants, do they?
I think that's, like, there.
What's that?
It's a, as today, they may just say, they had no, they're.
Yeah, we're telling you that.
So I don't know whether that's incorporating into Robert Hertz's job description.
Matthew, I have a question, this asset retirement obligations that I, you know, our lists are over right now, but I wonder, in my mind, trying to think of a scenario, if, if, for example, um, we had a tax sale come up on a building. And for whatever reason, uh, it's next to the service station that's not defunct and the company's not bankrupt, and we got the property, and suddenly it's considered that there's, but I don't think I'm talking, I don't, or be responsible on the hook. We're at, get rid of that, or is it an insurance issue? Or could we inherit something that we ended up having to expose?
We don't own it at that point in time, it gets complicated, and Tom's done it more than I have, this vacation where we have taken ownership. But, uh, it's, it remained in there for a while, Tom would do it.
If it was suspected.
Anything?
Contamination or asbestos or whatever. What, what, whatever. We wouldn't, uh, staff wouldn't be making recommendations for captain to buy it. We put it through an axel and, um, and who are the bodies that may be responsible?
Ownership does not revert to the town automatically if nothing happens, it just sits on the shelf. The town can, can bid it in and buy the property and has done that. But certainly, with Thompson's in that situation, we'd recommend it, it's bid it in.
So we couldn't, sort of unaware, inherit something and be stuck with it.
Aware would have mentioned though, yeah, because it was, it was a transportation that they can, uh, this one we fought for.
Yeah, and then there's no one housing, insurance policy, that's their long on.
The town doesn't own it, and they, they're bankrupt, and who's going to cover their up?
Then it becomes sort of a no man's land in the middle of town that no one would ever touch, you know, it could be disasters.
And, uh, that's basically it, I think, uh, the other thing, you know, just the mayor's opening remarks, a good chuckle, he just said, I want to thank the sponsor. It's the flaw in their e-voting software was the only way I got it. It's good for a chuckle, and I don't know what the, uh, the e-voting software people thought, but it was, uh, that's it.
Any questions? Thank you, Matthew. And we'll move on to special counsel.
I did a summary of your reports, um, names were pronounced slightly. Two Prince Williams Street, property has received multiple complaints concerning the portion of the siding. Written letter of several of the town citizens signed in protest, the situation has been received. Considerations surrounding regulations regarding property appearance standards has been gathered and given to the CEO for review. Likely discussion advised before making any decisions surrounding property appearance. Recommended careful consideration surrounding approach and wording used to avoid discrimination accusations, also strictly advised. But the discussion also recommended for additional. One forty Water Street received a complaint concerning the condition of the space that exists here of the building. Near large tract said to be formed inside the building. Written notice that photographic evidence was sent to the, to the owner by registered mail, see through response. I remember back, they gave a potential demo date of someone who's going to hand it this year through summer twenty twenty-four at the latest. So it would be required to be monitored moving forward. That's all I have, the names and slightly portion, unfortunately.
Two Prince Williams Street. Is he going to finish the siding job?
As I'm aware, yes, yes.
Because he's done two sides and, uh.
He has received a little bit of, um, um, pressure from the town, so I think we're trying to, you know, hold for a minute there, but we're going to be further. As far as I'm aware, that is the intent to finish it up.
Well, I, but I know the neighbor property that he's had his done, he's pretty.
Was that due to color scheme or did it?
It was a weekly color scheme.
Well, again, uh, right now, currently within the bylaw that I'm aware of, there's nothing that states that we can dictate the color choice of, of a, of a property with a color scheme. It's something that would have to be discussed with council and we put together. And, uh, I don't know if there's anything we can do at this time to alter anything that's previously done, but it would be something that could be worked on to prevent further situations that have been reported. But again, um, just the approach on it, I would just recommend that you be mindful of, just because it's conveniently, one person that's done the same thing twice, so make sure that the approach is taken, that it doesn't come off as a discriminatory feel, I guess, would be my consideration.
And I see you've got one on the, uh, on the, uh, on our side, the, uh, by the steps, oh, been damaged. The siding's been damaged there.
And there's some damage as well. Another, another repair for, for that, um, property, I'm going to take on, you can just want the, the person to take care of it. Are you still interested in the siding?
Not for, not for.
All right, so, services, CCTV camera, we have three cameras dropped signal, um, and service staff should bring them back online, everything's in operation. No, uh, parking control issues report, had a civic address to verify, done up to speak. Dog control, twenty-six Wannegarow, um, received a complaint of a solid placement upon arriving. We have since there was two dogs and five cats on, at the home. Currently contacted the SPCA for the wellness check. Had a hard time having any correspondence with the SPCA, so currently now with the homeowner, find solutions for surrendering some animals and bringing them home. Crossing bear, uh, received report from the crossing bear that even the children were basically riding bicycles across the crosswalk, which is not allowed. Their unit is basically a vehicle, so they're supposed to turn the crosswalk, get off the bike, and walk the bike across the road. Respectively, this is not something that I recommend crossing bears to educate the kids on. So it was mentioned that the, uh, schools potentially do a crosswalk and bicycle safety program, just to help educate the kids and safety use of bicycles around the crosswalks. Vending licenses, we had one special event, and a bad license issued. One vending license declined due to the arrival of potential, due to the arrival of the snow season and the snow pushout. Vendor also presented direct competition to existing businesses in the town, and due to off-season, it's just not recommended at this time. Taxi licenses, we received reports of taxi drivers suspected illegal activity after hours. I have no evidence to support the claims, and all that could be, of course, being reported to be done after hours. Something that, that, but we are seeing P and M moving forward. Ten Carrollton Street, received an email complaint concerning the van and truck being kept inside the apartment building. Order to be fourteen days to, uh, to issue a response, to indicate what they are going to do with the truck. Since this report was issued, they have come into the office and said they will have the truck removed by the end of the month, which I advise is a, is a noble war to the next addressing the property. One seventy-six Queen Street received a complaint from a neighbor who was subject to vandalism and surrounding debris. Um, seen notice the issue started happening as some new tenants arrived down the street. Went in, gave them some information, surrounding some sorting guides and some calendars, or waste collection calendars, this is done, we should have seen this side. King Street lot fourteen fifteen, but it's now been cleaned, property looks great, and now the kids are now looking for other places to hang out. There's been some complaints about the gathering on Queen Street, spoke to the RCP and the high school also to inform the situation, just so that they're aware. Twenty-six Wannegarow received a complaint concerning the condition of the property, lack of general maintenance being performed. Most recent site doesn't present a chance of channeling with the property owner, and we've discovered there are supplementing factors that cause the area to fall in disarray. Currently looking at options for systems to help the owner clean the area, it's a matter of time. Basic bylaw, bylaw violations, received officer in line, vandalism of downtown alleyway, device the property owner to install some signage, indicating no loitering allowed, potentially a security light or camera, just to deter any possible loitering in the area. Also noted by the RCP, just to make them aware of the situation as well. And that's it, that's my, I'm just going to say it. Further, sorry, good, that serves us. Any questions?
I'm not sure, but I, as a counsel, are we going to, uh, address this issue with more funds? If, I think we should start that one, they shouldn't, they have to.
Whatever we stand to the Minister Shavelski, but other case of page ten, so two seventy-six, that's going to be not said there.
I thought that maybe we should reach out to the area of persons as well, and just with their ownership and requirements, it might be good to see if they're planning on leasing something for, if they would like to do a, a joint statement with the town. Is that my, my weight to order to send off to the, uh?
Contact the other municipalities and make a lease and stuff, let's, let's go see if they're addressed. Already been, you know, correspondence and, uh, it was suggested by one that we do a joint letter, but, uh, the, uh, the mayor feels, and I think a lot of the other units feel the same, that, uh, no, fair more rate if it gets eleven. Eleven is supposed to one, one letter with eleven signatures on it, right? But, you know, it's all the same thing.
It's, uh, being traded in the ABS trial, and see if they're legal. So we can not really say no.
Yeah, there might be a month or two this, this year, and, uh, next time it'll be six months, and next time it'll be a year, year and a half, or. Oh, that doesn't mean a dollar, and for this long, that means, you know, they, they may not. When they purchase a ferry, it was for the deputy to Saint John fun, or a rendezvous, wasn't it? It wasn't for someone else, so.
Well, they've.
It makes it different.
They've gotten rid of rail, they haven't finished the highway. They've replaced the ferry that's been there for a hundred years, and another time, it's like that. It wasn't that long ago that that ferry went in for maintenance, there was a replacement ferry, we never lost that one.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Now suddenly, definitely, we don't need it for, for many months in a year.
No thanks. Yep, there's one, uh, the marine. Move up, stay up here a while.
Yeah, that's right. It's usually one of the ferries from Prince of England that came.
Yeah. Yeah. So it is strongly worded as you can, yes.
Yeah. Ben Corning on those items, so.
I, uh, yeah, that's what I, yeah, that's what I was.
All right.
Something that's every, the last.
I know we went around to the different units there, so.
CCS will not be limited. Now it's going to be very new business, uh, TV station. Uses. Okay, so we are, uh, senior management team is going through some of the, our administrative policies. So we do have a policy on TV station usage, but it is prioritized what the priorities are for the different uses. And also the fees and so, I guess, before we start making too much amendments to that, we wanted to get a feel from council where we, uh, what council's vision of that knowledge really is, right? So that we can, um, and fee structure, you know, are we not charged and not when we do charge? And, um, I mean, we're, we're, we're having issues with some people that want it for nothing, but they're using it to make money, right? And that's absolutely not what it's, I mean, if, if they want to use it to make, make money for, you know, holding a event that we're doing. Then that's, that's fine, but we need to pay for the use of it.
The difference, the difference is if they're making money for the fire department or if they're making money for a small game.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Yeah, so if it was, yeah, if it was a fire department doing fundraising, they're getting it, we're probably going to check.
Right.
Because they're, and, or if it's called ATO or that those type of not-for-profits, they usually let them, they'll charge them for, or their meat, if they want to use it for meetings and things like that. So we just want to make sure that, you know, what council's, you know, thoughts are on what the use and, uh, let, uh, Leslie administers that policy and she's one that has some headaches at times and it's like, like, every once in a while, there's a pile of hair laying on the floor, there should be more hair and try to deal with some of these people, so.
Yeah, stuff like that, but it's also, you know, like moving to a kitchen facility there because we're going to have a kitchen cupboards and we have a dishwasher and a fridge and all those things is the vision to have dishware, cutlery bins, you know, all of those things in the facility. In case we want to use it as a warming center or a comfort center, I get those terms mixed up. You know, or is the vision to have it when you stock with dishware and cutlery and cups and, you know, a coffee maker and all those things. And if so, you know, maybe the rent, you know, we talked about the surrender table senior management. Maybe the rent should reflect, you know, a kitchen usage so that if you rented it and nobody cleans the dishes and you have somebody going to do the cleaning, you know, it's reflected in the cost. So we didn't know how far to take the policy, where, what the, what council's thoughts were on the use of the facility.
So have you checked the other facilities in town like the fire department, for example, a little charge for the kitchen use? Or no kitchen use and they'll charge for the bar, legion charges for the bar.
Well, that's.
And like our charges for you, Peter, offhand or the current, because of the current charge.
I think it's a lot rate.
Yeah.
I mean, we did, we did talk about an additional rate if we'd like to use the kitchen, we can add a additional rate that would cover some cleaning costs and that kind of thing. Yeah, that's what your vision is for the facility.
And you put a cleanup fee in there, but they don't clean it up, so there's a, there's an additional fee to it because.
So you want a deposit.
Yeah. Now, we do, currently we do have a deposit, but we also have a security deposit and then another deposit. It's just, so, security deposit, I think is.
The booking fee?
Our booking fee, that's what it is.
Security deposit.
Yeah.
And then the rental.
And that's because, so that we can, I want to guarantee we're going to get our keys back. Yes. Uh, but there, the new doors that are being put on are going to have, uh, electronic entry, so we're going to be able to disassign codes and, uh, you, I think you need to set the timeframe that it's good for this time, at this time. And that, that just, it erases itself and they can't get back.
These first stuff, I don't, that's a big expense. That stuff gets broken, that stuff gets lost and sold. I can see a coffee machine and something for a water, sure. Like as far as dishes, if you have that as a warming center, it's a lot easier to break, they replace the pests. If you have something to feed somebody or a lot, that's going to be sandwiches or something like that. Anyway, it's not going to be the exact deal. If you want to raise it, then you will need to catch your cost for covering your electricity, you're going to use that for the heat.
We're hearing things, you know, just to.
So you know, which are stocked, you know.
I go at a big expense to stock a kitchen. Yeah, I think I'd stock with a few pots and maybe pans to stock for that time with the oven type thing. In case we do want to heat up soup or something for the power or whatever, but as far as utensils and stuff, not a lot. It's up to you to work to recommend and say, once you pass the plans or whatever, we'd like to have, you know, just put in there.
Use it. No, you're going to have mismatch of everything, so just your basic, you know, two saucers, probably can't even cover that.
But, but in looking at the policy, I guess, we can, let her revamp the policy.
Yeah.
Talk to her.
Do you got any of that, you want to get council's thoughts on?
Other than you need to be right, you're on my track. Fee use for meat, plus a fee if you want to use the kitchen, but the kitchen's just, you know, the facility is over there.
I mean, we're, have, have a kitchen door, that is lockable.
Sure is.
So, so, uh, it's locked.
Absolutely.
Uh, you.
Maybe add a key, you got the extra key.
You get that extra key or code, whatever, in case you break out the key, we, we have that too. And I know we've written it up before, we've worked it, you know, it's gonna be a problem also.
Yeah.
So if you've got it, at least, you know, you just, uh, for a meeting, you're still cleaning, as you said, I cleaned the bathroom. We have at least got, like, even to pay the cleaner to clean. And the tables and chairs over there?
Yeah.
And the tables are.
Yeah, we've looked at, we talked about, uh, what was their, actually, we, about, you know, switching up those tables or something. Where you're trying to use, use both of them. We have a hundred fifty thousand chairs, probably definitely.
You said that for what, twenty, twenty four people, that's huge, you want to get, you know, the star anyway. Six, six foot tables or something, so you can fold that.
Fold tables, nice.
Yeah, fold tables.
Reese is that. They're usually cheap, that's an apartment sixty seven all taped.
Oh, probably.
Usually get the curve.
Yeah. It's one of those things that you get a few dollars here and there, but a little time, but you don't, you don't spend thousands of dollars on this. And two, I mean, somebody that wants to function, say, you know, they need chairs, tables, I'm sure they're, they're ready for the fire department tomorrow or a church or something to move some.
There's not chairs.
That's what you, right.
Lots of chairs.
Lots of chairs.
They got actually going down the S and D.
Yeah.
So.
I would just.
I mean, it was nice when we get long-term milestones on that, and we have that.
Gives us some thought, I'm going to, why do you ask me?
All right, WSP traffic plan Victoria Street, Shreve Street. Be you, eh, I guess, yes.
So has everybody had a chance to glance, glance through this? So I'm just going to go page ten. Everybody wants to read page ten. Just the recommendations. So some of them are very simple, uh, very easy to do, low-cost items. Also, some of them are a little more pricey and takes a ton, or some of them work for sure. Now, Tom and I had a meeting this Friday with the, with the M L A only two representatives from the school board, potentially two times. That's, that's kind of a next step, well, let's, let's talk about the recommendations first. So replace the crosswalk signage, uh, across Victoria. Bridge Street, Ash Tree Street with new signs. Certainly have the yellow signs, yellow silver signs, um, were leaving. They recommended to go back to the white signs, so that's the standard sign. The yellow signs are a standard sign. At the time we did, we were told they were the standard sign for school signs, but whether they've changed it since then or whatever happened, white was the standard sign. Uh, plan for the installation of a northbound left and eastbound left turn lanes on Victoria Street, Ash Tree Street intersection. Uh, modify the parking signs along Tree Street to include no stopping, between eight and sixteen hundred hours Monday to Friday. So it's not a bad idea, anybody seen the parking signs, no parking signs there, they're all faded, maybe changed anyway, so it's something we need to do, so. It's, I said, low, low cost item, we actually have no parking signs in store, so we just have to look at putting the eight to sixteen hundred hours Monday to Friday. Yep, again, there are little signs that we refaced, as long as they're not banned or twisted, it's not a.
Why do you think they wanted different wording on the starting certain signs on the shirt?
Yeah, no, it was right there, no stopping, eight to sixteen hundred hours, yeah. Um, relocate the crosswalk. So basically the crosswalk was there, you're coming out of the third apartment lot, so the right inside, want to relocate to the left inside. So yes, our business said, well, they have cross traffic to get across, but if you get further down to the long-term recommendations, then we have to in, put back apartment lot and a separate exit, then they're not crossing, you have no traffic, just crossing along, and that'd be one way each. Exactly. So they could come in by the current crosswalk and they could go out later, so you didn't have to crack the whole, whole parking lot. So you'd be able to drop your shoulder, not the ones off and off, or you could park and take the crosswalk, whatever the pair or parity you choose. So something else that they said under the short-term recommendations is, uh, basically all of our exes that are at the crosswalks there at the school and the crosswalks that are in town are saying to take them all out. So it's not something that towns do, back in the day they did it, and it's not recommended to do anymore. So it's not just, it's, I guess, they're gone, it's costing us, we don't have to pay the pink paint, you don't have to pay our employees to paint them. And if you start to do, how much time is that, doing our small houses up? It's going to make, because we do it at night time, it's going to make that nighttime work a lot bigger, not doing those two axes later for crosswalk. Uh, long-term recommendations, so I'll just discuss this one, that's adding, adding exit driveways, you have entrance and an exit. So the current entrance would be narrowed up and then we put exit driveway, uh, over by the, the playground. Install northbound left to eastbound left turn lanes at Victoria Street, intersection. So basically we're running as, as a turn lanes. Uh, consider adding sidewalk on the north side of Tree Street, so basically that's along the elementary school side. And they, they recommend taking a break down to the entrance of the elementary school. And install sidewalk on the west side of Victoria Street, so that would be directly inside, and that's from map to street. And this one really isn't something that we should be looking at, and that's why we have a meeting of the, the M L A and the school board is consider adding a bus only, in only right way, off Victoria Street, the buses that have access to the elementary school. That may be the most costly thing. Like, this, adding the, the extra lane for us and the additional sidewalk, you know, it's, it's costly, but.
It's not the real reason to be, you put that turn lane, then we do have to, we have to do a little.
But we do have some play there, I think, what we could, if we made it work. But I guess what I'd like is move, number four, move the sidewalk and add the exit lane to their parking lot. I know you're talking about one now and one, one of the future one we're talking about, they're probably the two biggest ones, besides the signage, which we can do right away. So this was, they were really good to work with this company and, uh, they, they did a really good job for my sake, for my right.
And so recently about crossing bears not being traffickers. You know, sometimes they sort of are stopping traffic and all the buses are leaving. You're like.
Need a challenge to take them on point there a little bit.
Yeah.
Especially in the moment with lots of cars and traffic and kids and stuff, yeah. Didn't spoke to you much of those in, in every area, but spread this out a little bit, I think it'll make it a little easier for, uh, especially like against, uh, the border crossing crosswalk. Pretty, pretty simple, but they have, I think, a little bit of, a little bit of, should, should use a little traffic. That would, that's the, that's the, so. Personally, this is a simple adjustment, and we shouldn't be, we're starting to see, it's, yeah, we're, we're, I just, but we can add ideas. Yeah.
They think the very schedule, they have to move this traffic.
And we did the other possible. That one, I think we did for this one. Because where the ferry wouldn't affect the school.
Because I think it's late enough, the ferry comes in in the summer schedule that it shouldn't affect it.
I never, I never had it come up before, so I'm only saying no, it's never, ever been mentioned. Is there anything that I missed on, or?
I'd say it's, uh, it's what recommendations are the recommendations, but I don't think that the low-hanging fruit, we should be able to do. Economically, could do, as soon as possible. Yeah, unfortunately, when the school, when the traffic, the traffic was out of, in charge.
And we, we had that conversation on, uh, there was no traffic review done that long. There are other things there. And that traffic issue there, we do. Yeah. That being on her, yeah, they're not being able to use that, that made the traffic issue.
Of course, that's using private property. It shouldn't be used to private property.
So it just shows that the actual look, the actual driveway is a big difference. You gotta make it with itself.
Well, we tried at the time, uh, when we paid the, the parking lot there to, to work with it. We agreed to pay that piece that was, that was causing trouble. And they wanted us to deal with it. I don't know what to do on it, but you, and I know it's private property, but.
Yes, in perfect world, if you had lots of money, you could buy that, whatever that is. And make that your second exit to Victoria Street. Break a little bit, leave a side of that, sir.
And that, that property actually is triangle, you go to a point.
Oh, really?
Yeah, you go to a point, so no real a, road access or any amount of road access. And, uh, then the reason that it could exist, or it exists and will have to be sold, is because it was already a, a pretty terminal lot and it has a bid number. So otherwise, it would hit, it's all with the other one, right? So, yeah, we just still had to buy some property from, from the Baptist Methodist Hospital. And so to get, yeah. But if we go up to the eastern, northeastern corner of the parking lot, and put that exit there, right? And, you know, they're coming out and they're going past where, uh, the, the kids are taking the bin, drop the kids off, and we go back out. Shouldn't be a bottleneck anymore.
I'm surprised they didn't, uh, recommend that number eight in blue be right off the bat. Because when I was up there watching a couple of years ago, a lot of kids would cross the street to get to the sidewalk. So it created more kids walking over to go on the sidewalk, then they had to bring them back again. So I'm surprised that we don't do the sidewalk on that, on that newer side.
And, and they walked in, so.
There was no sidewalk there.
Yeah, that side, I just went up and I had to look, this sidewalk was in, and they had this exit on the east side of the school is open. But you have to understand the school doesn't want. Yeah. Schools have a front door.
Right.
Bus students, so.
Bus.
So they don't want the task students, so they don't want them on the, on this east door up there.
No, they want the front door. They have strict rules over there, where you can take your children, where you can camp, and where you pick them up, and it's, it's quite a nightmare to use it actually.
I'm assuming, I'm assuming that's what it is. And I'm sure the applicants, because they don't want the kids to be next up, those students, that makes total sense. So they have separate, really staunchly, the kids, the students go first, and the task students go second.
I'm really surprised that they wouldn't look at doing that right off of that. And the other thing, of course, the conversation we had with, uh, the arena staff, not wanting that number six there.
Yeah.
And how much parking is it going to take? And they said there's a lot of kids at that park, so even in summertime, so it's a bad entrance as far as they're concerned.
So then I talked to Sharon, I talked to Sharon about it last week, and she's okay with it, because she thinks their day program is a big, well, medical program. There's so many that people just dropped off. Great for, you know, being all students there. It's, that's all we had is reviewed on, is.
Yeah.
And we just, we just, we can't, can't do this. I mean, I'd say it's twenty twenty, but we need to, we need to design it, but it's. Never heard that before.
That's a permission, that's a permission. And they are talking, like, needs.
Well, I mean, they had that whole piece in front. That if they had turned the building ninety degrees, they could have gone all the way around the.
Well, they got, they got the whole soccer field there too, right?
Right.
They wanted the soccer field there.
Which then what he was having to do, the, the most, the side posts to the lift station.
Well, we also.
Nothing but all.
We also tried to have the, uh, the Bonnet Castle park is, and the elementary school, little playground is. We tried hiring to, to have both of them combined. And because of the, the chair at the time, she was not interested. And that was, uh, that would save a lot of, it would be dedicated to that parking lot, a lot of, oohs.
So after that, I think Tom, uh, will report back to what we're going to do. And then we'll make some considerations for next year's capital level, as we said. We'll do, we'll do the small ticket items now, if everybody's happy with it. And then the bigger ticket items will come next year to tackle what we're going to do.
So your new signs for the non-parking long street, would they just put one sign?
Well, likely yes. Because I, I think I've estimated the full blanks up there that we can use. As the parking zone, the parking sign.
See, it's, 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 every year.
Well, that's what happens, you get signed down, you don't see them, you're everything, you're seeing one day.
And proper, yeah. They had the Arizona monkey in the back crosswalk of the school. With the crossing there, that caused some of the issues as well. And the bottom, I think, because, but by moving it to the other side, crossing there, you know, it's people, unless they're going down to, to, uh, call them workshop or, or that.
I remember there was two of the, there were two Asian people around the school. Kids, like, well, I'd go to by every gate, shit, that's why he, I, I'd, I'd be over there watching, because he had so many complaints. And we were there together, and it was, he was like, wow, this is, this is something, so. When you don't see it, you don't know, when you stand there and watch it.
You know, the worst part, I mean, having to talk about it is, the dark parking lot, that they're sort of away from the traffic control, crossing walk guards. They're in their own little, oh, I'm getting my car, and I'm getting in line first before anybody else, or, well, it's wicked.
Oh, yeah, a few times I've gone a little bit with my granddaughter. Whoa, this is crazy. Yeah, that's good.
Very good. All right, any other questions for that? We'll move on to the municipal capital growth program. Thanks, Hannah.
So I guess, uh, we did probably cover what I wanted to cover under, in my report, under that, because basically it was for council to recommend, or this committee to recommend to council, uh, a letter of support and all that. So I think we need to deal with that at that point.
So move on to the draft and BD marketing and promotions, twenty five dollars. Two zero two three oh three.
Okay. Yes, in my report, I should highlight, uh.
That's going to change. To change.
Yeah, the changes. This one didn't count, it was the fire that did it.
Uh, no, I'm sorry, because I, I made this so correct for me.
Yeah.
Sorry about that.
Oh, okay.
So it was the one room and the mayor and the.
Yeah, so, so, yeah, so, back to the top there. Three percent, so three percent. Three, uh, section three point one is a marketing promotion that we here for impose, and kind of give the rate of which shall be three percent per night per room. That changed from about two dollars to three percent. That brings us in line with the, uh, provincial legislation. And seventeen, eight, six, I think, six. Yeah, so basically, yeah, seventeen, uh, N B L I C shall be comprised of six voting members, one citizen and one operator collecting funds under the marketing. Each from the town and district appointed by each council or expected to be, in addition to one member of council from the town and the district. So basically, it was just the mayor and the warden, so it opens it up so that, uh, it's any member of council can be appointed. Uh, all members shall be voting members, uh, the chief administrative officers of, uh, non-voting ex officio members. And the point each term shall be three years and citizen two years. That's all pretty much the same.
Two A, two A, one or more representative's on your report?
Yeah, that, that remained the same, that's what it was.
Probably wanted to change it three, but we say, uh, yeah.
Yeah, but it's, uh.
Are you ready for the chairperson?
Yeah, the other point, the chairperson can be appointed. Any, any member can be, uh, chairperson. And the other one is.
Number eighteen is just a shelf, maybe chairperson?
Yeah. And the other one is sort of the man, man date.
Change for, like, another, increase, increasing the.
Well, there's a reason.
I mean, that tourism, that's what it is.
Yeah.
Sixteen A.
Yeah, shall only be used to, yeah, to promote tourism. And used to read to. Increasing rooms, rooms. It was a nightmare, because everybody had their own different interpretation of what I meant. And, uh, and the promotion of, the promotion of tourism is broad too, but it's, you know, it's a little bit more controlled or.
Just an economy factor, somehow, even.
Yeah.
That's up to them, I guess.
Yeah, and the committee is going to work on, sort of set a guideline, something similar to what our, our grant to organizations process is, and, you know, you need this, and you need this, and that's what you want. And we want, just, you know, by doing this, what is the deliverables, what do you expect, that type of thing. So we'll put it back together so that for next year, uh, we, yeah. Yeah, and, or anybody else that wants to put up, knows the criteria that we're going to be looking for.
And their process would be one twelve months a year, because they have to meet so many times, not just a once a year.
Oh, you have to meet the minimum of four times a year, right?
I would think they want to do their projects based on the seasons and.
Oh, yeah, but, uh, the thing is, the most important thing is, it would be the challenge that we had this year with, with, uh, there's a lot of growing pains. And the availability of, of funds, right? And we're not cutting any checks for anything that we haven't collected yet, right? And, uh, so we're dealing with right now, so that, uh, based on their, their submissions, that we're going to be giving twelve thousand at one point. And that's about, you know, another thirty, I think, by the end of December. And we have enough funds, so, like, we'll keep it, uh, like, putting that's in this file.
Are these other meetings? Can anybody attend those meetings?
Yeah, it should be, yeah. And it will be considered, uh, open.
And I didn't see, I probably overlooked where, what time of year are they to submit their monies?
Well, we haven't come to.
Come back yet.
What, what do you mean? Who submit the money?
Like when, uh, the hotels submit the levy money to us, to the town?
Yeah.
Is that twice a year, once a year?
Once a month.
Once a month. That started in one month, that's there.
All right, so.
All right. So do you need a motion to do that, or? Correctment, council, the, uh, first, first reading of the, uh, the.
Oh, no.
All right. Senator, all in favor?
Aye.
Those, okay. All right. Draft, temp, staff, different character policy.
Okay, so you were, may remember last December, council needed a motion to increase the thing for one year, and then we were to look at the, at the, uh, policy. So basically, um, policies, new policy statement is, is to provide fifty dollar gift card to an eligible registered member of the town staff at Christmas. And we're prepared to do the thing with, uh, the, the, the food bank. And, uh, because that's discussed at, at council. The food bank should be putting in for, for rent, like, all the other organizations, so. So that's sanctuary.
I was glad to see this, I was glad to see them separated, but not together with the food bank, it was just. Get some food, I do. Absolutely, make more of that thing than this one.
Yeah, this, this policy dates, I mean, regional, the regional policy dates back twenty years, so the turkeys, yeah, it was turkeys at that point, right? And so at every cost, the turkeys were for the staff, and I swear, I just gave them the food bank. So then when we take the gift cards, that's the same, kept coming, but.
You just lose that, I feel, you know, it's only get, so we should have had a two.
They'll have it, yeah.
All right. Good with that.
Motion policy, or motion, I said, that, that, for administration policy, two eighty three, that's it.
Do you have a question?
No, I was just going to say, do you need us anymore?
No.
So we really want to see how this ends. I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those motion carry. All right, so hot off the press, it came in your email, it's a letter from Rick Foot. Anyone's had a chance to read it, even. Sounds like you had a good read of it, uh, call it, you wanna maybe talk to some about?
Yeah, it just, yeah, the original message was, he played on point, he was just made of a overall lack of seriousness given to his concerns and what he raised, that the King Transit authority and the company that hired to do that didn't represent them, which is, he's sort of coming in a few now. And the response wasn't even sent to Rick, and not until if the warden made a response and suddenly he was included again on the emails. I mean, it was just, it all kind of smacked very unprofessional. Um, to me, and he raised some really good points that he wanted to talk about, and it wasn't taken seriously, I don't think. So it's all kind of on Bruce now. But I think we should probably, if nothing else, have the mayor have a chat with somebody from King Transit, see what really is going on there. And get in touch with Mr. Foot now that we're looking at it.
Yeah, but it did say or replied she would take her his concerns to, uh,
Council.
Yeah.
Yeah, and he asked both the councils to, to take that.
Yeah.
And he's, that counts, he's a taxpayer in Washington, can you, down there?
So do we want to respond to it as well?
You can let her know that to, you know, intend to have someone to speak to King Transit. And then sort of escalate what is, give us feedback on this original points where and I also think that we should probably once again cycle back to you need to have another joint meeting with, um, with the municipality. Because I appreciate the fact that the, uh, the warden put a man that she was bringing up at the meeting. But one of his brought up our one other previous joint meeting, it was just like shut off. Uh, but do we actually, we even discuss it that night that, uh, it was brought up? Or was, so I think she didn't seem too interested in, so I'd want to make sure that she's actually in the follow up on that too. It's not our place to overstep in terms of, you know, municipal function, but we, we should make it a priority if we're, if we're meeting with them to talk about that.
So I think we're looking at January, February, November, possibly the joint meeting.
Yeah, the conservative, you know, we don't pay very much for that bus service now. And, uh, maybe just change, we did obtain a lot more over there now.
But that's, you told your review, that's they're looking for anyway, the increase.
They're looking for an increase anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're gonna get an increase anyway, most of the protectionist service, the most
The greatest possible.
And, uh,
It was a classic example of red tape, when you look way back when, it's original proposal, what's changed? Add a tech away, normal time for your meeting, it just made it more accessible to people to try and shop, try and go to the bank. That, that was his whole goal to start with, and it's gone on and on and on.
So there's also another one there from Castor David, Castor. U S P dot com. Thanks for your comments, having conducted them, they've got studies, I can assure you that the now public engagement requests are like, you can see their current seeds in the north. Victorian comments on sticky notes, you can tell them to consensus is a common technique for public meetings. I can assure you that if you were to take care of verb for bathroom record of twenty hours, twenty hours of input, you won't read it. And tell you that we did not share King Transit's plan with the attendees because there was no plan. That's why we were hired. I hope you continue to follow and contribute to the study. So he sent that to Rick and everybody. And then David Colen made a comment. I'm confused by Mr. David MacFusser's comments. Which can all be bad. So, yeah, there's a few things that we if I know what's going on.
I guess, one of the boys, Rick has a concern with the integrity of the meeting. Yeah, so it's been nothing to shorten the process, is that fact?
No, that's right. So does Jeff, does municipal have anything to do with that, or is that just strictly King Transit?
I'm not sure, it's the, the, uh, the mister, the warden says, but she doesn't have a vote on the board. And so it's very what it is is they have a, this family has a contract with King Transit to provide service, they provide the bus, and they provide the service. It's a lot like, something similar to our, to our library, our public library. I mean, we provide the library space and own the furniture and that stuff. But Western County Library funds the staff, provides staff and all that for the libraries. All right, so the thing is, is that that's why they have very little control unless they want it. I mean, if we said that we, if the town said that we wanted to buy a bus to do the time route and connect within this valid bus, which in turn would connect with uh, the, it's a form office, right? Then they would probably entertain the same, uh, deal. But, I mean, you're talking about, um, you know, large cost upfront capital cost, which are our, our grants that we can get to that. And we would probably, could probably give fair dollar if you decided you wanted to do this and do go green and do an electric bus or whatever. And that's if we're just doing around town, it would probably work well and we'd probably get a lot of remakes and of the grants insurance and the benefits of well, that would be, that, that would be the responsibility of the contract that we have. That may be the operating director now, but we would pay a cost there whenever that cost is. Yeah, because this though, cost is not cheap. They spend big money on that.
All right, so keep it on the radar and take a chance, be delighted, and then we'll be back to council only in a first month, so if we have to bring more up, we can. I guess we just need a response to work to say that we are looking into it. Just a even simple email. All right, and the next one. Let's see, pass out prior to the meeting, if you get one of those to be the garden.
Yeah.
All right.
Probably in that nutshell, basically what, uh, what they want is a general letter of support with no specific sites, right? But just that we would support applications to do root trees on some town property. Whether it be, um, the old Thai view or the other place that they looked at was, uh, along the shore road and Heritage Road. And that, that green space there, right? So, uh, but, um, anyway, look, they're, um, they're only got till December third of the rain, so they asked me for a letter of support to, uh, monitor capital slots for
As long as they have the understanding that they'll just, if they get the ground and they're gonna do it, they can back and we talked about where it is.
Yeah. Now there's not room, that's a community garden, fruit, fruit trees up there.
Talked about permanency of things up there back in the beginning.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But again, I mean, we have one, we have the territory. Yeah, I, I mean, the thing is, I think it's part of their, of the community garden sort of program thing that they're, they want to have a, uh, they'll maybe people that'll knock one of the trees and look after it, make sure, then they get their fruit, they get to reap the benefits of the fruit, so. Or it can go to the I know we have long term plan right here, I've been property. Yeah. Uh, so I'm having problem planting trees there, long term or replacement. Or even Heritage Road, it's, uh, yeah, right, probably, you know, just probably in the no least corner side of that property, forward towards the pine side, because it would be not, and so the houses that are on you know, depending on the type, uh, type of trees, running little trees, you know, along the fact their, their view and stuff like that. There's no place on, uh, right? Already earmarked that for different type of trees. Well, I know we planted trees
Yeah.
on there, but, you know.
All right, so just need your action.
Yeah, I just wanted to find every representative.
New Red School. Uh, is that investors?
We were all probably, we, we bought it and, uh, that tax, that, that sale, just, uh, because we would have never had our money back, but we spent to build again, right? So, uh, but we were sort of hoping that, uh, justice department, they wanted the parking or something, right? Which would make a nice upset park and spot or even a story building or something along that way. And, uh, but, uh, they want to use it, they want to get a claim.
That's just the good news.
Yeah.
All right, we're gonna need to move into the camera. So, oops. Nothing else?
Well, for tournament, I would just like to say, uh,